All right, the time is 4:31 and we'll call together the December 9th Minneapolis City Planning Commission hearing. My name is Sam Rockwell, I serve as the President of the Commission. I'm joined here today by Commissioners Brown, Kogel, Coleman, Suesi, Schrader, Olson, and Kronzer. Our first order of business today is to approve the actions from the November 4th, sorry, the November 18th Planning Commission hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Next, we will, is the Committee of the Whole agenda from November 21st. Commissioner Lippick appears now here, so we reviewed a modification, number three, to the Housing Replacement District Plan. And there's a recommended motion to approve the Housing Replacement District Plan expansion. Modification is consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. For those of us who are at the Committee of the Whole hearing, there were additional items in our packets today. I'm not sure if there's any discussion on that. There's no discussion on that. With that, I will take a motion to recommend consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Some move.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Our next order of business is to organize the agenda for today's hearing. I will walk through all the agenda items on the agenda. If you are here to speak against an item or to modify a staff's recommendation, please raise your hand when I walk through that item, otherwise we will place that item on consent. So is anyone here to testify on item number one, tract AS 353 North, 5th Street in Ward 3? Seeing no one, I'll place that item on consent. Item number two is tract F 353 North, 5th Street in Ward 3. Anyone here to speak on item number two? Seeing nobody, I'll place that on consent. Item number three is the Kemp Paper Corporation Registered Land Survey, 3145 Columbia Avenue Northeast and 3236 California Street Northeast in Ward 1. Is anyone here to speak on that registered land survey? Seeing no one, I'll place that item on consent. Item number four is the Baca Museum remodel at 3537 Zenith Avenue South in Ward 13. Is anyone here to speak on item number four? Place item number four on consent. Item number five is 3750 Zenith Avenue South, Ward 13, variance and minor subdivision there. Is anyone here to speak on item number five? We have one person on item number five, we'll discuss item number five. Item number six is 3528 to 3530 Bloomington Avenue South in Ward 9. Is anyone here to speak on item number six? Place item number six on consent. Item number seven is 1428 to 1444 Marshall Street Northeast in Ward 3. Is anyone here to speak on item number seven? Seeing no one, we'll place item number seven on consent. And item number eight is the Dinkytown Mixed Use Project, which we will discuss. And item number nine is the zoning code text amendment, which we will discuss. So our agenda as amended is a discussion of items number five, eight, and nine, and items number one, two, three, four, six, and seven are on consent. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. With that, I will open the public hearing on the consent agenda. If anyone wishes to speak on the consent agenda. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, do I have a hearing to approve? Commissioner Kronzer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I do need to recuse myself from items one and two as they relate to the Southwest Light Rail.
Commissioner Kronzer is recused from items one and Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. With that, we will go on to our public hearing and start us off with item number five. Staff, it's Shanna.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners, President Rockwell. The property located at 3750 Zenith Avenue South, the property owners are seeking two applications before you today. The first is a variance to allow for the existing structure in its present location and a minor subdivision, which will allow for a developable lot, Lot B on the north. The property that you can see here has an existing single-family dwelling with a vacant lot to the north. The property is planted with two lots, and the applicant, as I mentioned, is intending to keep the house in the present location, and there is a bump out on the north property line, or what would become the north property line. So the applicant's proposing to adjust that common lot line to allow for a minimum of five feet from that bump out to comply with the building code. So as you can see, Lot 9 would be the vacant lot, developable in the future. The applicant intends to sell that lot, so we do not have a plan for the proposed structure on the vacant lot at this point. And then, as I mentioned, the existing single-family dwelling is intended to remain. The minimum interior side yard setback is seven feet, which is increased based on the lot width of the existing lot, increased from six feet, or five feet, which would be allowed on a narrower lot. In addition to the minor subdivision, when property does not have access to a public alley, we ask that the lots be increased. So the minimum lot width in the R1 district is 50 feet, so we would ask that it be 60 feet to accommodate a driveway as proposed. It's 57.55 feet, which staff found to be sufficient enough to allow for a driveway. When taking a look at other lots on the block, it's a little bit hard to see, but you can see that all of the properties along Zenith Avenue South, north of the site, do have curb cuts along that street to allow for vehicle parking towards the rear or within an attached Staff has addressed the required findings for the variance and found that the proposed project should be approved for the variance to allow for the reduction in the north interior side yard setback, and then all of the findings were met for the minor subdivision. So staff has indicated on page six of the staff report to recommend approval of the two applications without additional conditions of approval. Be happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, thank you, Shanna. I'll ask the applicant to step forward, introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Charlie Gallup, I'm the applicant.
Oh, very good.
Oh, and this was maybe just a bookkeeping issue, but there was a typo in the packet that was sent, but it affected the square footage of the lot, so I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed. It's on page four of the packet, and I tried to get ahold of Shanna early today, and we didn't connect, so.
Very good.
So it's on page four, second paragraph, it says the new lot will be 47,478 square feet, which would be great for me, but that is not true. It's actually 7,478 square feet. So there's a 4 that's been inserted in front.
You don't want the extra 4?
I'll take it, I mean, I'm quite fine with that. But I just wanted to be accurate, so.
Thank you, okay, and that is the only issue?
That's the only issue.
All right. Very good, we will make sure that that's addressed when we approve this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have two items before us, and we have a correction of a typo in finding number one of our minor subdivision. Would anybody like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move approval of items A and B, the variance and the minor subdivision.
Very good, we have a motion to approve items A and B. Do we have a second? We have a second. And noting the typo correction in finding number one of the minor subdivision, any discussion? Seeing none. We can just do a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our business with item number five, thank you. Our next item of business is item number eight, the Dinkytown Mixed Use Project, and Lindsey is staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. The site before you consists of five parcels and almost one and a half acres in size. It's one-half of a block with frontage on 4th Street Southeast, 15th Avenue Southeast, and 5th Street Southeast in Dinkytown. The site currently contains the Dinkytown McDonald's and drive-through, several one-story commercial buildings, and a large surface parking lot. The applicant has proposed a 10-story mixed-use building on the site with 329 dwelling units, consisting of 885 bedrooms, and 23,000 square feet of commercial space. The site has a significant grade change between 4th Street Southeast and 5th Street Southeast, so there is commercial fronting on both streets, but they are separated by one level. And you've seen this project, most recently in November at Committee of the Whole. There are a number of applications required for the project. The zoning on the site currently consists of C1 and C2. The applicant is proposing to rezone the entire site to C3A. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to increase the maximum height from four stories to 10 stories. They've applied for an alteration of a non-conforming use to allow the fast-food restaurant to reestablish in the new building. There's a variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio, variance to reduce the minimum parking requirement, a variance to reduce the minimum loading requirement, a variance to the pedestrian-oriented overlay district standards to allow the building to be setback more than eight feet from front and corner lot lines, and site plan review. This is the submitted landscape plan, which I think is kind of the clearest site plan we have for the site, which shows the split between the 4th Street elevation and 5th Street elevation in terms of having commercials fronting on each side. So the proposal currently is for a 10,000-square-foot commercial space fronting on 5th Street, and three smaller commercial spaces fronting on 4th Street with the proposal to relocate the current McDonald's fast-food restaurant into the corner of commercial space there. And this is the floor plans for the B1 level and the Level 1. The elevations are shown here, the applicant is proposing brick metal panel and stucco as the main exterior materials, and some elevations submitted for the project. So the site has guidance that supports mixed-use, high-density projects, both under the existing comprehensive plan and the Minneapolis 2040 plan. And so staff is balancing the guidance between those two plans at this time since it's coming through now, but the rezoning will be coming through under 2040 as the council meeting that this will be slated to go to is not until next year. So, under the current comp plan, the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, the site is designated as mixed-use. The site is within the University of Minnesota Growth Center, the Dinkytown Activity Center, and fronts on a community corridor. So the guidance we have in the existing comprehensive plan calls for up to 800 dwelling units per acre, and the proposal is for 227 dwelling units per acre. Under Minneapolis 2040, the site is designated as community mixed-use in Corridor 6. Corridor 6 allows for six stories in height, and there is a provision that allows for increased height, as long as the increased height is a reasonable means to achieve further comprehensive plan goals, and I'll get into that in a moment. And then, community mixed-use is designated for active commercial areas with lots of pedestrian activity, which fits the location in Dinkytown. The applicant has proposed several, what they're calling "community benefits," those goals that would further comprehensive, or those benefits that would further comprehensive plan goals. That includes a voluntary compliance with, not quite with, the inclusionary zoning that will become effective as of January 1st, but very similar to proposing affordable housing for 8% of bedrooms. The applicant has also proposed an affordable retail space on the ground floor, to remove the existing drive-through, to improve the pedestrian realm, including the bike route that runs along 15th, elevating that to the curb level, providing enhanced transit shelters, including public art, some limited district commercial parking, an integrated drop-off area to prevent conflicts between bikes and buses and other drop-off vehicles, and one-car sharing car provided in the building, and some lead and other energy-efficient design elements. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, given those proposed amenities, and the conditional use permit would be to increase the maximum height from four stories to 10 stories. However, the applicant is also requesting an FAR variance to increase the floor area ratio from 3.78 to 6.04. And while the, while staff can see the request to increase height to further those comprehensive plan goals as reasonable, the proposal to increase the floor area ratio, staff did not find a practical difficulty and does not find that to be reasonable in the context of the building design. So while there might be a 10-story building on the site that staff would support, the proposed building, which is quite bulky and really appears to be a 10-story building with few recesses and step backs that might mitigate the impact of that additional bulk, is not something that staff is able to support. In addition, there's a loading variance that staff is recommending denial of, mainly because the applicant has submitted findings that really speak to the residential loading on site, which all the units are proposed to be furnished, so the staff does recognize that it may be reasonable to not provide residential loading on site. However, there still is one small commercial, or one small space required for the commercial, and on the submitted plans, that space is located within the parking garage, while the applicant has indicated that commercial loading would not occur in that space, and instead is proposed to be in a small, kind of cutout area next to the shared drive that allows access to the site, and the proposed loading area does not meet the minimum dimensions required for loading. And so, based on that, staff is recommending denial of the loading variance, because the commercial loading does not seem adequate for the proposed quantity of commercial space on the site. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, the conditional use permit, the alteration of a non-conforming use, variance for the, to reduce the minimum parking requirement, the variance to pedestrian-oriented overlay district standards. But staff is recommending denial of the floor area ratio variance, loading variance, and site plan review, as the site plan review is really tied to that design of the building that requires the floor area ratio variance. So I will stand for questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? I've a couple of quick questions, Lindsey. Can you just reiterate for us what we should be considering on kind of a legal basis under Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth and under the Minneapolis 2040 Plan?
Maybe I can have Kimberly answer this one.
Very good.
Yes, Chair Rockwell, the findings in the staff report have been written as needed to address both the current comp plan, the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, and where necessary, Minneapolis 2040. So land use decisions based on comp plan guidance or that have to take the comp plan consistency into account need to be made based on the policy that's in effect at the time that you're making the decision. So today, we are working under the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. The rezoning is going to be going forward to the city council in January under Minneapolis 2040. So would any appeal that's received from the actions of this meeting would also be going forward in January. So in order to avoid a case where we had to rewrite the staff report quickly before ZNP, where needed, the findings have been addressed both ways. So for tonight, your decision on the conditional use permit should really be based on the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. The rezoning's a little bit murkier, but you should also be taking into account primarily the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth at this time.
But our decision could be appealed and then would be subject to different policy upon appeal?
Correct.
Cool. That's a good law school test. All right, and then my second question is, under application C, the conditional use permit to increase height, you have put in there two affordability conditions. In the applicant's application, on page four, I think, of their application, no, well, somewhere in their application, on page one of their application, they list a whole bunch, I don't know, maybe 18, community benefits. The only community benefits that are actually legally binding as conditions on that conditional use permit for height are your conditions number two and three. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Very good. With that, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and introduce yourself.
I'm Ryan Sidaway with CA Ventures. We are the applicant team, along with ESG here. We're gonna get a few things queued up, but wanted to thank you for your time today, Lindsey and staff as well, as well as various stakeholders. As you may know, this is a very iconic corner, and we don't take that lightly. We've been meeting with various stakeholders on all fronts, the various neighborhood meetings, about seven or so in total, meeting with other stakeholders, the MSA and the Dinkytown Business Association, which actually should have a letter of support forthcoming, they weren't able to get that drafted by this meeting. Also, city staffed Hennepin County, Metro Transit to date and ongoing with them as well. And also, several meetings with Councilman Fletcher, too, to work out the affordable. Obviously, that's a major piece here. The project as a whole, as Lindsey mentioned, 329 units and 207 parking spots, which I will note does not have an impact to traffic operations on that corner. That means the queuing time and the delays are the same because of the drive-through that's there right now and the traffic counts that it produces, so this offsets that as well. Approximately 23,000 square feet of commercial, most have been allocated. We've talked to all owners there and have worked out agreements with them, and everyone on that front is happy with where we're at in that process. Certainly more to come there as we do have a large space, and we are looking for great tenants for those locations. The inclusionary zone, the elective proposal on our inclusionary zoning, we've been working, we're kind of the guinea pigs for this, so we've had a lot of ideas. We use a lot of our own internal resources, kind of giving a lot of feedback on kind of how all of that has worked for us, where we've used it in other markets, and I think we've come to a pretty good idea here that we're trying to implement. And then, something that's new and not really addressed in there, too, is the affordable for small local businesses, and to really try to keep that in Dinkytown, and that's been heard through several meetings that that's very important to the community, and our goal is to utilize that as well, and kind of think outside of the box there, not just affordable units, but also kind of keep some of those businesses in place there. One thing that, Lindsey touched on most of them, but I'll also just touch on, you know, district parking and public art, were two things I didn't hear on there, that are really important, that we find really beneficial to the area to enhance that feature. As well as security, we have state-of-the-art security features that will be implemented there. There'll be a lot of traffic, obviously, with the bus routes and everything. It's a very important intersection for all sorts of transit there, and the security and operations that we provide there with eyes on the ground and well-lit areas and not having any of those locations, that can, bad stuff can happen. So with that, I will pass that to the design team to let them get started, oh, those are up there, sorry, if you want to discuss some of the design features.
Commissioners, Neil Ruden, ESG Architecture and Design.
Alyssa Yagfeld, ESG Architecture and Design.
All right, we will just summarize, we'll just summarize a couple of design items here for you. I'll first start with the site plan here. So we've been working with staff at the city as this has evolved, as well as Metro Transit staff and Hennepin County staff. Hennepin County is, county, 4th Street is a Hennepin County road, as well as the bridge at the Chamford edge of the property. So overall, the site plan, you can see some site plan sections there on the screen, and these are our boulevard designs at present. We have received feedback on the 4th Street design, but I'll just quickly summarize that for you. We have a proposed arcade up next to the building, which actually comes underneath at Level 1. In that area, I'll just highlight here, the retail arcade, and then the residential arcade. I'm gonna speak about both just now. So both of those are about providing access as the site slopes off from the corner of the High Point at the corner of 4th and 15th, and as it goes down in grade in both directions to Plan North and Plan West. So that's the purposes of those arcades. Additionally, they give us a little more space for circulation and entry into the building, and allow the right-of-way beyond the property line to be used, as you see in cross-section there, with a really robust plan there for plantings and other urban design amenity features. So on 4th Street, we have received some feedback from Metro Transit about what they'd prefer there. There's a future E-line bus rapid transit, which is evolving, and will probably continue to evolve as the project potentially goes forward. So one of the pieces of feedback there is they're gonna have loading all along there, so we're considering modifications to that as necessary. But right now, there's some strong boulevard plantings there and some benches there between the through-walkway zone and the curb at present. Additionally, one of the things we're proposing, one of the many things we're proposing on 15th Street, is a raised elevated bike lane as a way to clean up the conflict that could potentially exist with the future front door of our building being along 15th Avenue. So our main residential entry is along that arcade that you see there on the, along 15th. So we're proposing that raised bike lane. We're also proposing a visitor and rideshare drop-off zone, which would also take that conflict away from the bike lanes, as well as the potential conflict of that with the bus, new bus station plan. So while there's plenty of buses on 4th, there's also actually plenty on 15th as well. Currently, the site is served by a shelter just at the Chamford corner at the bridge, and under this new plan, we'd have two proposed locations, both outboard and at the boulevard, and the one on 15th would have the bike lane swoop behind it. On the north half of 15th, there's six trees and a very ample boulevard between the bike lane itself and the building. And then, moving around to the 5th Street side, again, a very existing condition there of a very ample boulevard, which we would keep and enhance with further plantings, bicycle racks, and other amenities in that zone. That whole side of 5th Street faces a commercial zone there of about 12,000 square feet. A few other items I'd note on the site plan, and then I'll talk about the proposed loading plan, which Lindsey alluded to in a minute. We had some feedback from general, in a couple places, that the alley should be a one-way alley. So we have made that change from it in future, in previous renditions, it was looked at as a two-way alley for at least part of it, or all of it. We've since modified that to a one-way alley, and that was really due to some really good feedback we got from various people, neighborhood and staff and Metro Transit, about the entry point coming from 4th needing to be a one-way to mitigate and eliminate potential pedestrian conflicts along 4th Street. So that right now is a one-way proposed going north from 4th Street to 5th Street as a one-way. And then our entries points to the building are in that alley, and so actually, we've, in previous renditions, had a curb cut on 5th Street. We've eliminated that curb cut, and that's all happening through the alley now. What you're seeing on the screen now is a proposed, is a diagram that shows how we're planning to handle the loading and drop-off for the building. So there's three yellow zones there in the alley. Those would be locations of potential delivery, parking zones, where the one-way traffic would still be able to go through the site, and then those deliveries could happen in those zones. There's a 50-foot zone and an 18-foot zone in each of those places, and then the red arrows indicate the procession into the building from those areas. Additionally, there is Additionally, there is a loading zone, which we would plan to use for commercial and residential, located at, at that area within the building. At this point, there isn't a plan for it to be exclusively residential or commercial. So it's a, it's a mixed approach and would be used as a, depending on size of vehicle, on an as-needed basis, depending on the use. Additionally, I can go through some of the setbacks on the upper plans. If necessary, we have made some changes based on staff feedback to those, to the extent possible. Alyssa will now talk about some of the exterior material massing changes. And I'll for that.
So I wanna look at both the Fifteenth Avenue and Fourth Street elevations and show their relationship to the historic buildings, both to the north and to the west. So the top elevation is the Fifteenth Avenue, and you can see to the north some three-story buildings. And we've modified our massing of the building to have both a two-story along Fifth Street, come up to a three-story and have this nice relationship to those buildings across the street. That upper mass with the stucco on top, there is a setback. So you'd really see the pronouncement of that three-story volume. And then along Fourth Street, there's a very significant, I think it's thirty feet or so, twenty, thirty feet, for the two-story massing to really be accentuated along Fourth Street in its relationship to the existing historic buildings. Some other things that we've changed since we met with you at Cal. The proportions and rhythm of the windows on the second story of the two-story version. So we've really scaled those down in relation to the historic buildings next door, as well as opened up the arcade so that the, there's a lot more visibility, less brick at that base, and there's a lot more transparency and porosity for people to come and go out of, out of that area. Here you can see that three-story massing I was talking about on the north side of Fifteenth Avenue. And also the two-story as it steps down to the west, as it goes again to the historic area of Dinky Town. So another view along Fifteenth Avenue, the residential entry at the center. And you can see how dramatically the grade drops using a planting bed and some really wide, we widen those stairways for the access for the residents. An aerial view, you can see the commercial arcade along Fourth Street, its relationship to the existing buildings in Dinky Town, as well as then also the relationship to those buildings to the north on Fifteenth Avenue. And I guess overall, going for a simple use of materials, brick, stucco, metal, like Lindsay had described, and using these setbacks in really strategic places where we can accentuate the massing moves that relate most to their adjacent neighbors, while still presenting a project that can be built for the developer.
With that, I'll just summarize a couple other things. Yes, the setbacks have been maximized to the extent possible and still, you know, still making the floor plans work and the unit count possible for the, the nature of this, this project to, to be built, quite frankly. So one other item I missed on my site plan was we have a proposed plaza at the corner, which you've seen in some of these renderings and the site plans itself. That plaza, that plaza is out in that Chamford public right-of-way. The design of that is a little bit ongoing with, with Hennepin County and the city. But we have a proposed design of that that is currently meeting the plaza standards. But just so you know, it is continuing to, to evolve, and we're open to, to that design evolving as, as those discussions go forward about, about how it can be built. With that, our design team is available for any questions, should you have them, as well as, as I said, the developer.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Krasner.
Sorry, I have two questions. I'll ask them both at the same time. Do you have any renderings from the north and the west? Trying to show you what you see from the commercial areas of Dinky Town? And then are you providing electricity to the bus shelters?
Electricity hadn't been discussed, so the first one, Commissioner Krasner. Electricity hadn't been discussed yet in any of the meetings with, with Metro Transit explicitly, but I think the idea was, would be that as these are reconstructed, that yes, it would be provided. I don't know the, the source of it, whether it be the house, you know, meter would come back from our project or elsewhere. But I think the developer's open to making that consideration. So we're just bringing up that other view from, your question, I believe, was from, essentially, the, the angle of, of Fourth and Fourth Street. What does that look like? I don't know explicitly that we have an angle of that shot, but I'm bringing up an elevation of that complete side. You could look at if you have specific questions on that side. We have received feedback that that is potentially like the most visible side of the project, even though it's the one, the one side of the project that's not public-street facing. And so we, we took that into consideration in, in some of the recent changes of the massing and articulation of materials on that side.
Yeah, it's in the elevation of the land use package. I don't have it currently in this presentation to show you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Krasner.
Yes, could you bring up?
The circulation plan that, with the one-way alley and the loading areas. And then I would like to ask staff if you've seen this and whether this has any impact on the recommendation regarding the loading variance.
Yeah, they did share this with me earlier. I think the main concern is that there just is not, like, the, the main space where they're proposing for loading vehicles to wait is not the required width by the zoning code. So it's only five feet wide. So if the, if the proposal is just for a one-way alley here, it seems likely that commercial traffic, if using that as, as a loading space, might block, traffic flow into and out of the site. So I, I don't know that, you know, that staff would recommend the full three spaces of loading area required, but probably to ensure that wherever commercial loading is happening is a fully, a fully sized loading space.
Commissioner Krasner.
So if I understand you correctly, the yellow rectangles are five feet wide?
Apologies on that site plan. Yes, it does, there is a dimension there that reads as five feet. There is another dimension there that reads as fifteen, so it's twenty in total. So that five-foot dimension is certainly misleading. That's my fault. Overall, the, the width of that particular zone there that you're seeing, I'll just highlight this right there, as well as this, is, is twenty feet total. So it's enough for a ten-foot zone for loading and then another ten feet for a vehicle to pass by in a one-way situation. So twenty feet total in width, ten feet designated for both.
So just so I'm clear, the alley itself is twenty feet wide?
The alley at the points where there's the pull-off zones is twenty feet wide. At the areas where there's not pull-off zones, it's between fourteen and fifteen feet wide.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Krasner.
Just a clarifying question on that. So the legal definition of the alley splits the yellow loading zones? Or is that to the west of those loading zones?
So we're, currently, the plan is to pursue an easement with the properties to the west. There currently is an existing alley there on the other side of the property line, which is two-way, currently used as a two-way alley, coming and going from the backsides of those properties. So this shows a proposed easement with them to use a portion of, of their alley and combine the two into a one-way alley going north. Worst-case situation would be if there was two alleys proposed there, they're grandfathered in as a two, two-way alley that's ten feet wide, and then we're proposing a one-way alley directly next to that on our side of the property that's also ten feet wide. That would be a, a nightmare situation for, for the alley at Fourth as it meets there. So this plan potentially cleans up that issue, as well as provides better access for these other properties and the whole block in general for deliveries and trash and any other vehicles that would come and go. Does that answer your question?
Commissioners, further questions for staff or the applicant? All right, thank you very much. With that, I will open public hearing for everyone else here. Remind everyone that we have a few applications that we're looking at specifically. And so keeping comments on those applications would be great. Anyone who wants to testify, come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Dave Mosman, 619 Eighth Street Southeast, Unit 302. I wish to urge you to stop and not approve this project because of several health and safety issues that it would create. I am a retired physician. I left practice because I could not see well enough to drive and see print. I use a white cane to get around and to negotiate the city. I no longer drive, but did drive in urban traffic for decades. Thus, I have a unique perspective on what happens when you change traffic patterns and when you look at traffic patterns. I have lived in the neighborhood for ten years. I've used that intersection to get on and off buses and to transfer. I have stood there multiple times for long periods of time observing what's happened while I waited for a bus to arrive. There are several difficulties with this plan. First, the recessed bike, or bus stop on Fourth Street would create a criminal issue for the fact that it would be back away from the lighted sidewalk where multiple people driving by, walking by, cycling by could see what's going on. If you're back in a recessed neighborhood, recessed alcove at a building, you're not gonna be seen. You're gonna be subject to criminal activity. Second, the crossing of the buses into that shelter at Fourteenth or Fifteenth Avenue and then back out on the Fourth Street would be a problem. Multiple pedestrians cross that intersection on all four directions. When a bus has to, buses and pedestrians cross in parallel on Fourteenth Avenue. If the bus has to wait for the pedestrians to, to exit the intersection before it can turn, it will invariably be sitting there when the light changes, blocking traffic on Fourteenth Avenue, thus slowing down and increasing congestion. Not only that, there are up to three buses that will arrive at the same time. There are four or five or more bus lines that use that shelter, especially if you count the BRT that is proposed. Thus, will there be space for the buses to come in, to discharge, pick up passengers and then leave while not having to sit idle and wait? Currently, they leapfrog around each other. If they're exiting from the proposed thing, they would have to cross the pedestrians. They'd have to cross the lane where currently there's car parking, cross the bike and scooter lane and enter the traffic, main traffic lane. That would be chaos. The city is also looking at reducing traffic-related deaths. They have, they have signed on to Project Zero, which says that they will seek to eliminate automobile and bus and related deaths. They have done two proposals, one on cycling and one on pedestrian. In short, the more chaos an intersection has, the more likely someone is gonna get hurt, hurt seriously and often killed. If you create and increase the chaos here, you will make that worse. Moving on to the alleyway. Having to enter off Fourteenth, off Fourth Street and exiting on the Fifth Street sounds good. But the more traffic you have cutting across the multiple lanes of different flows of traffic is gonna be problematic. How that can be resolved, I'm not sure. Moving on to Fifteenth Avenue. Fifteenth Avenue has bike traffic, pedestrian traffic and bus traffic, as well as car traffic. If you have the buses move over at Fifth Street to cross the bike lane so that they can access the bus stop, whether they have to discharge people or not means that every bus coming down that street will have to pull over and come in through that intersection. They will then have to cross the bike lane again on Fifteenth Street, or on Fourth Street, coming out. There are gonna be a lot of pedestrians on Fourth Street trying to cross while the bus is trying to cross as well. I think this crisscross pattern is an, is a recipe for disaster. Also, stalled and sitting traffic and idling traffic cause air pollution. The city of Minneapolis has a major problem with air pollution. It did an extensive study, and if you look, there were two of the five significant pollutants are auto-generated. Naphthalene is a problem throughout the city, throughout the year. Stagnant air makes it worse. That causes eye irritation, nose irritation, throat irritation, and excess deaths from other causes. If you build this building up like it is, it will cause change in the airflow patterns. The predating airflow comes from the northwest. This would cause, cause an air block, thus causing increased stagnation of air there. Thus, the pedestrians, the cyclists, the scooters, et cetera, will be at increased risk for air pollution problems. I urge you, six stories probably would not. So I think that maybe a six-story building would work. You've also got to consider the, the novelties and the nice bells and whistles that will actually cause more problems and probably more deaths than they would solve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Larry Crawford, 1055 Fourteenth Avenue Southeast in the Como neighborhood. The Dinky Town neighborhood is one of the treasures of the city, along with the other small business districts like Uptown and Linden Hills. It's kind of a unique mix of the old streetcar, two-story architecture, streetscape, and the vitality that comes from the mix of small shops and the local community service, services and, and businesses provided there. The city needs to plan very, very carefully to preserve the vitality of these jewels of the city. This proposal does nothing to further it and will in fact destroy some of the remaining vitality of the Dinky Town neighborhood. The scale of the building at ten stories is so tall that it will actually destroy the streetscape. If you stand, for example, at the corner of, of Fifth Street and Fourteenth, this will be a solid wall rising above the remaining historic portions of Dinky Town. In fact, it'll actually probably shadow, throw the Fourteenth Street heart of Dinky Town into, into shadow for a good portion of the day. Nothing justifies in the proposal the exemptions from zoning and planning that the developers are asking for. In fact, the proposal is so full of implausibilities and contradictions that it really falls flat on its face. If you, if they actually had businesses in the business footage that they propose, the development would blockade Dinky Town and the main arteries going through it with all the delivery trucks that would be pushing in and parking all around on all sides of the building to make local deliveries aside from residential delivery services to the tenants of a ten-story building. For a comparison, I'd encourage the council to consider the nearby area of Stadium Village, which once actually was a fairly vital streetscape and community center. It has received development very similar to this. And of course, as you probably know, it is now completely lifeless and, and blighted as far as street activity and vitality. That's, that's exactly the recipe that you're going to apply to Dinky Town. And although Dinky Town's been damaged, it still has a lot of vitality left. This proposal will certainly end it. To sum up then, at a very minimum, there's nothing being proposed here that justifies- going beyond a six-story building. There's no way that a 10-story building can be justified on the basis of any of the supposed benefits being put forward. Really, the ideal solution, which I would encourage the city and CPED to be negotiating for, would be to encourage a consortium of developers who have long since leveraged the attraction of Dinkytown and built around it with numerous new high-density developments. They've leveraged upon it, they've certainly profited from it. Now, it might be time for the consortium of developers to go in and try to restore the vitality of Dinkytown by taking this block and building a two-story compatible brick wraparound of small sites, get rid of the surface parking if that's no longer acceptable, but ring that block with compatible small business center architecture to try to restore and encourage the further development and life of the Dinkytown area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Michael Gloss. My address is 1200 Nicolet Mall, and I'm testifying to talk about walkability, sustainability, and transit. So, on walkability, I moved from Standish in South Minneapolis, which is very non-dense, to Loring Park this, actually just a month ago. And the reason was that in Standish, we had an infant a year ago, and it was, it was very difficult to navigate that neighborhood with a stroller on unshovelled sidewalks. Businesses were far apart, so anytime we were traveling somewhere, we were going long distance. And we decided that to make our family raising easier and safer, we would move to Loring Park, and we found it to be quite enjoyable. And when I saw that this project was getting a little bit of pushback, I wanted to come and testify about that. On walkability, having more density will just simply make more things within reach of people without having to get in their car and travel around, jamming up streets, creating traffic, creating air pollution. This is right near University of Minnesota, so there's many, many residences that are going to be added from this project that are within walking distance of either school or of the many jobs there on campus. I see no reason to limit the number of units that are being built. I think there's pushback on the floor surface or the floor ratio to the lot size. I've traveled extensively around the world and seen many walkable neighborhoods that have similar 10-story buildings block after block. And if there's enough protection for pedestrians and cyclists, these are, these are highly walkable, quiet, safe neighborhoods. Certain things do need to be managed like loading, and I think that that's being taken into consideration. Also, on walkability, it seems like the proposal's like, maybe this is more on cycling, the bike way that is elevated is being taken into consideration, which should provide safety. We biked that area a lot, mainly on the Dinkytown Greenway, however. Biking on the street with lots of traffic can be quite dangerous, so I'm glad that they took that into consideration. And finally, as a daily transit user, the BRT is coming in down that stretch, and eliminating the number of residents that live within high-frequency transit is really a disservice to the work that Metro Transit has been doing. I really would like to use the bus to get everywhere in town, however, there are certain limitations that occasionally present a challenge to families, and that's lack of frequency. BRT solves that. So for families living in this building, that, that higher frequency will make it a lot easier to get around town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to testify? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Caroline Pavlasek. I live at 1849 Washington Avenue South, and I am a junior at the University of Minnesota. And that entire time, I have been involved with student governance and with student advocacy. And from interacting with a lot of my peers, I've generally found that this, this proposed project is wildly unpopular. For most students, whether they live in Dinkytown or whether they live in a surrounding University of Minnesota neighborhood, this development is going to affect them as many students walk around this area, go to the businesses there. I've also been to a few Marcy Holmes Planning Commission meetings about this proposed project and engaged with the developers there, and there has been a lot of pushback from the community and a lot of things that have kind of gone unsaid. I know there were a lot of asks that were not really answered to. A lot of people were concerned about the space being used in a way that is engaging with the community, potentially through having a community center, and that isn't in the existing, the existing plans that a lot of people have been concerned about. Another thing is with the commercial parking stalls. As it's proposed, there will only be 20 stalls for commercial space, and given that this is in a very high-density neighborhood and there are, there is potentially going to be a grocery store in this space, there's been some concerns about whether 20 spaces for a grocery store is really enough? Are there really going to be no more than 20 car users going into the grocery store if that does get put in? And then another thing was, the, I know this has been brought up before, but the property being in keeping with the historic district as it is immediately adjacent to the historic district, a lot of buildings of this height are not nearby, they're a couple blocks away, and having a 10-story building right next to a historic district that is primarily comprised of one or two-story buildings would be a bit of a sore thumb. It would not be in character with the surrounding neighborhood. Another, one final concern that a lot of people have been brought up is the, is with the courtyard. Given that the proposed project is a 10-story building, there were some concerns that got brought up. Some students mentioned that there would not be very much light coming in, and that would not be very, that would not be, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of the word. It would be impor design practice to have a courtyard that is so small with a 10-story building, and there not being enough light getting into the lower-level units that look out into the courtyard. And overall, there's a lot being crammed into this space. And so I think that the design in general is not something that is in keeping with the community's asks, and I would urge the planning commission to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to testify? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Hey Commissioners, Devon, 2701 Fourth Street Southeast. I live across the trench in Classic Park, so kind of sort of neighborhood. I'm here to ask you guys to approve this project and to go against that recommendations and approve the floor-to-area ratio application and site plan review. It's pretty much a pretty good project. Everything you can ask for, it has affordable units, it has commercial space all around it, it's in a walkable dense area, it has bus enhancements, all, oh, and affordable commercial space possibly in the future. There was something else that I could also say, but I can't remember. But yeah, just, I urge you to approve this project and go against staff recommendations on the site plan review and floor-to-area ratio.
Thank you very much.
Oh, one thing, I forgot, I remembered, sorry. The chateau is like right near this project, and that's like 22 stories, so I would kind of dispel with the notion that 10 stories is outside of the neighborhood character because the chateau is literally, you can literally see it. It's not far off in the distance, it's literally right there. And the Marshall's like right there, it's five, so 10, 5, 22, it's pretty much all in the same range. So yeah, that's, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much. Next up, please come forward if there's anyone else. Otherwise, I will close the public hearing. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Vic Thorstensen. I'm the, I'm at 306 Street Southeast in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood. I'm the president of Marcy Holmes. You have two letters from our organization in your packet, and they cover most of the things that we've talked about, but there's been a lot of interest in this in our community. We've had two large, open-ended public hearings, public meetings on this. The thing we heard the most about was affordable housing and the need for some sort of grocery option. Dinkytown is a, is a, is a food desert, but at the same time is a fast-food oasis, which is kind of a, kind of a paradox in itself. We support high-density housing. We have worked with developers to put in quite a lot of it in the last 10 years. I think our, according to Minnesota Compass, since 1990, our population has decreased by nearly 50%, probably even more than that by the time the 2020 census comes around. And, you know, as far as high-density housing goes, bring it on. But bring it on in a way that respects the process that both the city and we have worked with to develop standards for, for new development. The blackened question here, according to 2040 comp plan, calls for a six-story limit. And with extraordinary cases, you can go higher for extraordinary benefits for the community, but what we're seeing is an extraordinary benefit for the developer, but that's quite so much for the, for the community. If you have an 8% of the units, 885 bedrooms, are at 60% of the median income, that 8% doesn't necessarily justify a 65% increase in height or a 75 increase in the density. The other thing that we're concerned about is the Fourth Street Southeast access. I understand tonight has moved around a bit from a two-lane, or a two-way entrance and exit to a one-way. It would still be our strong preference to see that on Fifth Street Southeast rather than Fourth because of the somewhat lighter traffic load there and the lack of transit stops there. It would be a smoother transition and a little, quite a lot less dangerous for, for both the bicycle traffic, the transit lanes that go through there. And if it could be moved to Fifth, I think that would be a big improvement. So that's what I have. I think there's some other folks that have items to say about this as well.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to testify? Thank you. Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cordelia Pearson. I live at 512 Southeast Fifth Street, Seventh Street, excuse me. I chose to live here in 1990 without a car. Came here to law school, raised a family here, graduated from the law school. Some of my kids have, one of my kids has graduated from the U also. So I've chosen to live in our city, right in the core, and I love hearing the stories of people who've chosen to live in our great downtown and adjacent neighborhoods. What I'm here to address with you, as the board president of Marcy Holmes, when the business district was adopted and the small area plan was adopted, so a little bit of that reference back, why do we have a business district plan with guidelines that call for six stories being the maximum for development in this area? And why did the comp plan, the 2040 new comp plan incorporate that? So I want to talk a little bit about why you have plans and development, and this is news, not news for you, but orderly development. Let's say the plan for sustainable development was a 45 mile an hour speed limit, and you want to have more development, you want to have more affordable housing, you want to have safer, and you want to have the city addressing the climate crisis. So let's boost the speed limit for the city up to 55. What does that do? It balances needs for good air quality and safety, and it also is reliable guide for any driver, developer, who wants to develop in the city. 55, you know what's needed, not 75 miles an hour. This project is the analogy of a 75 mile an hour project coming in when you've just adopted it, you've just increased the speed limit to 55. So why do I say that? Let's look back at 2014 when you adopted the plan. The Dinkytown growing with preservation, the business district plan is part of the current 2040 plan and the sustainable plan. Marcy Holmes is right at the junction between the Mississippi Downtown, the university. It's identified, its identity is a historic neighborhood, and it is the commercial node in Dinkytown that is closest to the university historic area as well, both the Greeks area and the Knoll. So this area is a historic business district, it's a commercial business district, historic district, has a distinct character of two and two-and-a-half story buildings. These are all from the business district plan. And what led to that? It wasn't simply somebody saying, "Oh, I'm nostalgic about Bob Dylan." It was actually a market study looking at the core identity of Dinkytown. How can we maintain the business vitality of this area and maintain its placemaking qualities? There were people who participated in this plan that, who had never before participated. The city funded a creative placemaking process. We had mobile input stations. It was a fabulous example of community engagement that I think the 2040 plan then mimicked, followed, and honored. What were some key findings? That this business district serves many key markets and that it has a unique nostalgia-related brand that strong development pressures were endangering. We knew that we wanted infill in this, in this business district. And what kind of infill? The business district set that forward, no more than six stories, and it then had design characteristics for that. This is different than the historic district plan, whose guidelines have not yet been adopted. These business district guidelines are now part of the city's adopted plans. So I encourage you to follow the plans that you've got. Why? Thousands of people participated in this, the economics support it, and the 2040 plan does say this area is corridor six. I encourage you, since you have just, the ink is still drying on the 2040 plan identifying this as corridor six, think about the impact of your decision on small area plans citywide. If you at the first instance decide, "Oh, we made a mistake, this actually should be 10 stories," that would be transit 10. What stops any developer from any of these small areas saying, "Oh, the city planning commission seems to be welcoming more intense development where actually this was thoughtfully recommended at corridor six." So corridor six accommodates the adjacent historic buildings, it accommodates reasonable economic growth for this area, and it protects that placemaking unique character of this historic district, which is right next to the historic part of the university. So please be clear to developers. Invite development that doesn't rely on endless variances. You yourselves have said, "We want to have a built form and land use guidance that is clear, that does not add to the expensive development by extending the development process." We would love to have, as our neighborhood president stated, we'd love to see a development that we can embrace, as we have many. We've embraced 10-story developments in Marcy Holmes that have been consistent with local plans. So we'd love to see the planning commission say no to the rezoning, no to the conditional use permit and the floor area ratio changes. Finally, as a bike commuter and bike user, I'm deeply concerned about the bike design on Fifteenth Avenue. I know that a young woman was killed at this intersection. The idea of having one block that isn't a continuous bike facility, that you're going up onto the erased area and you'll be traveling between the people loading the bus, getting on and off the buses, I would probably end up riding in the street. That defeats the purpose of having a bike facility at all. So be very careful about representations that are made about the bus stops and bike lanes that have not yet been finished. And with landscaping, landscaping isn't a frill. It is part of how our city will adopt, part of how our city will adapt in this climate crisis. So the fact that the development has zero of their landscaping acreage, trees and shrubs met in their plan is not something to overlook lightly. So I encourage you to deny this project and invite something that really follows that 55 mile an hour speed limit that you set, that balances all the public goods of our, growing our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, if anybody else wishes to testify, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sam Pendrews. I'm a resident of the Marcy Holmes neighborhood. I live at 606 Seventh Street Southeast, and I'm here because I support this mixed-use apartment building in Dinkytown at the McDonald's site, where notably nobody currently lives on this site. I support the floor area ratio variance, I support rezoning, and I support the parking variance. As someone who graduated from the U this year, I experienced the difficulty in finding housing as a student. Undergraduate enrollment at the U is up 14... Undergraduate enrollment at the U is up 1,400 students from 10 years ago, and there are just not enough places to live. It's simple. We cannot house more people if we don't allow new residences to be built. This location at Fourth Street and 15th Avenue Southeast is the perfect location for housing and retail due to its close proximity to the U, bus routes, and bike lanes. First of all, I want to emphasize that nobody currently lives on these lots. They are currently used for car storage and a drive-through. Nobody will be displaced from their homes by building this. Currently, about 30 percent of U.S. greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation, but this project would allow 1,000 people nearly to live car-free or a car-light lifestyle in a walkable area. The university is adjacent to the site, so residents can easily walk to school and work. People will also bike using the bike infrastructure next to this building that was just upgraded on 15th Avenue, Fourth Street, University, and Fifth Street last summer. This project further enhances bike and pedestrian safety by removing a dangerous drive-through and driveways. In addition, this location is perfect for a 10-story building because there are six different bus lines within two blocks. Routes 2, 3, and 6, as well as the University Fourth Street Circulator, buses all stop at this building, and the University Avenue Circulator and Campus Connector buses stop within two blocks. In the future, the rapid transit e-bus line will literally stop here. Building new housing in a walkable, transit-oriented neighborhood is action against climate change. We cannot wait and do nothing while students move farther away and pay higher prices because there isn't enough housing. I hope the planning commission will approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Eric Wunderlich. I live at 413 Fifth Street Southeast, and with all due respect to the character of the historic district and the 2040 plan and things that others have mentioned, we encourage density. We live in the city. We're not opposed to density. I'm not opposed to density. Through the meetings that led up to this hearing, we were very thrilled with the number of students that showed up at neighborhood events to talk about this project. And the message was loud and clear, that they wanted a grocery store and they wanted affordability. Those were clear things. We're not seeing the community benefits of either of those. So throughout the process, the developer led us on that they were working to try to locate a grocery store, yet the design of the building didn't even fit with a grocery store. At the last meeting, when we asked, "Well, what about the grocery store?", they'd have to come back with a new project if they did land a grocery store. With regard to the affordable housing, I've participated in affordable housing conversations with University of Minnesota students and an event that Steve Fletcher put together. And student affordability, $450, and, and not for the 100 cubic feet above their bed, but actual living space. So this unit is, this project is predicated on renting units by the bed to students. So achieving affordability by crabbing, what, 10 students into a five-bedroom unit and like sardines and a, that's not, questionably, that's not even housing. It's a bed. Eight percent of the units at 60 percent of AMI, that's affordable to those students that earn $42,000 a year. What about the 98 percent of the units, the 92 percent that aren't at 60 percent of AMI? Those are units intended for the students that earn more than $42,000 a year. This isn't family housing. This is student housing. It's clearly going to be marketed to students. A project on the site of six stories? I like the idea of two-and-a-half stories, two stories in the entire block. That, that's intriguing. But if we're going to do housing on this block, this close to the university, it should be affordable to university students. Without the inner courtyard, they could probably get close to the number of units into a six-story building. I think in the end, what the city should be doing is working with the University of Minnesota, encourage the university, cajole the university, embarrass the university to getting involved in student housing. And, and you know, maybe, maybe actually come to a long-term solution that could provide affordable student housing in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to testify? Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name, I'm going to live this little, hi, my name is Rebecca Cowan. I live at 633 Ontario, and I'm also the local government coordinator for the Minnesota Student Association. I just wanted to add a little bit of context of how students were involved in that process because it has been brought up a few different times. I originally heard about this project over the summer, around June or July, and it was council member Fletcher that helped connect MSA with the developers so that we could start having these meetings at the very beginning. I saw the initial plans for the project probably around late July, early August. So we had, started having these conversations about what students needed and what students wanted from these buildings. Some of the main concerns are affordability, sustainability, and the grocery store within the building, as has been discussed before. On the affordability front, that took a little bit longer. It was a lot of conversations with council member Fletcher's office, the developer's students, but we did kind of get that worked out within the proposals for inclusionary zoning fairly close to that and what we would be doing with students. I think it was a great model to see that developers are willing to do this within a student context. We also had numerous students at all of the Marcy Homes meetings, and the developer took steps to actually host a forum on campus directly with students, which I think was a good model proposing that if these developers want to work with the university and that kind of demographic, they should engage that population specifically. On the sustainability front, it is a very dense building near public transit, and as we've discussed before, that is one of the best ways to reduce a lot of our emissions. If we're not traveling quite as far as campus, we can take transit to work. If the E-line gets developed there, that could take you all the way down to some of the suburbs so students can get all the way home and still live near campus, things like that. On the grocery store front, this was proposed. From my understanding, the developers did take efforts to have those conversations with some of the grocery stores, and it wasn't quite feasible within where the project's at. We have heard some concerns about the bulk of the building, as was mentioned by the staff. It is kind of towering and does take up the entire block at that 10-story level. So we have heard those concerns, and we've had concerns about the continuity of the businesses that are currently there. I know a lot of the Asian Cultural Student Associations are very connected to Pagoda, which is currently on that lot. There's a lot of business at McDonald's and the liquor store that is on the corner within students. Those are very popular locations. So we've heard both sides. Overall, MSA is not in a place to give a firm stance. We're here to relay what we've heard from students on both sides, so we just want to make sure you understand where we've been at with that and the conversations I've been hearing throughout that process.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, my name is Dave Blumquist. I'm at 224 Third Avenue Northeast. I do not currently live in Marcy Homes, but I did live there during college. I'm still on the east side of the river, and I just really, you know, recently, the city came out and, you know, declared that we are in a climate emergency. We need more housing in a dense area connected to transit, and in addition to that, we are also at a housing shortage, and we need to build more homes. There are no homes on this site currently. There's a drive-through that would be replaced with people who are able to live in an urban area near campus, able to get to the places that they need to get to. This is a, just a really good location to have housing in our city, so I think it's really important that we consider approving this building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? State your name and address for the record.
Kristen Idi-Talison, 1316 Fourth Street Southeast, and I'm representing the Board of Preservist District Dinkytown. I'm going to, can I give these to pass out?
Oh, sure, just to the clerk, thanks.
I'm providing copies of the guidelines that Cordelia Pearson mentioned, which are in the Dinkytown Small Area Plan. There's been quite a bit of confusion about the guidelines since the historic district guidelines have not been approved. But there, this is, these are excerpts from the actual guidelines in the Small Area Plan. And to mention briefly, the 800 DU highest-density provision that Lindsay mentioned does specifically reference compatibility with the Small Area Plans. That was in that compatibility. So I won't discuss those in any great detail, except to say that with reference to the considerations in the design guidelines, the Small Area Plan applies to the full four blocks, not just the parameter, parameters of the historic district, applies to the full four blocks of the Dinkytown Commercial District, which is the oldest, one of the oldest districts in the Twin Cities. It was the site of the first horse barns for the trolleys, and in fact, did have street cars through 1954. The, this plan, this guidance specifically addresses new and infill development and how the guidance should be used in reviewing development proposals, including the following, and these are citations. Ensure that new development within the activity center is designed in a way that is compatible with and contributes to the area's unique character. Page eight. Use the plan's desired guidelines as part of the development review process to ensure that new development is compatible with the existing area. Page eight. And while accommodating new growth is consistent with city comprehensive plan policy for activity centers, new development should both respond to and support the unique character of the Dinkytown area. The, so these, these are all provisions in the existing guidelines. And although the district boundaries have excluded buildings built after 1930, the historic district study actually recommended the entire inside of the four blocks to be part of the historic district. And so I think it is fair to consider them as, consider the whole commercial district as an historic resource for the city. I also have provided, I think in an email, some policy statements from the 2040 plan that recognize, that quote, "Recognize and promote the value of the built environment and landscape as an asset that enhances community identity and a sense of place," including Policy 60, intrinsic value of properties, Policy 94, heritage policy regulation that protects historic resources and requires new construction to be compatible. Policy 96, cultural heritage and preservation recognition, which acknowledges preservation and cultural placekeeping efforts to keep cultural memories associated with special places alive, and supporting the ability of local residents to maintain their way of life. And finally, neighborhood engagement, which is what we're doing tonight. So I, I want to provide those contexts, and I, and I have one little illustration that is attached to the front, and it reads, this is from Meet Minneapolis, the, a section on Minneapolis neighborhoods. Dinkytown, I mean, sorry, downtown, uptown, Dinkytown. I think this means that the city recognizes the special character of Dinkytown and its role in the city as one of Minneapolis's great places. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to testify? Yes, come on forward, state your name and address for the record.
Chris Meyer, 601 Sixth Street Southeast. I've lived in the Marcy Homes neighborhood for about the last decade, and I would really like to see this site redeveloped, mostly because of what it would take away. It would take away the surface parking lot, the drive-through, and three out of the four curb cuts that are on that half of the block, and those would all be significant improvements, along with the plaza, the broader sidewalks, and other things that a project would build. It would also create more customers for the businesses nearby, more people who would use public transit, and help make the forthcoming E-line bus repair transit proposal more sustainable. It would help enable more students to live close to campus, and not just students, but people working at the university or downtown or elsewhere, to live close to where they live or, or to work or, or study, instead of having to commute in from the suburbs. And it would mean a much greater tax base for the city, and they'd be paying taxes to our parks and to our schools, both the property and sales taxes, instead of to the suburbs. So I feel those are all great things. So I'd like to see something at this site. And I just believe that because McDonald's has a grandfathered-in drive-through there, it's going to be very difficult for a project with, with just six stories to be able to raise the funds that they would need to, to pay off McDonald's. So somehow or other, I hope that you will come up with something that will make that work. I also believe that, you know, this is the first time that students have been really engaged as long as I've been involved. I have never previously been to a board meeting where students were the majority of the people in the room, but that happened at one of the meetings that the Marcy Homes neighborhood hosted on this, for one of their land use meetings. So I really feel that we should defer to the students who haven't been previously involved. I don't think they're really involved in the crafting of the 2040 plan, as far as I know. And the things I hear from students are primarily about affordability and a request to get a grocery store there. So if you were to turn this down tonight, I would hope that you come up with something to help get those things as part of a project. So, for example, you might consider possibly passing a density bonus for projects when they have a grocery store, or maybe allowing a density bonus when it's a cooperative, like the 20-story Chateau Co-op, close by. I mean, those are the things that the students are really focused on. The students have not been focused on height, so if you could provide affordability or grocery store, that would really be what they're aiming for. And I just, but I also find, found it puzzling in the 2040 plan that the higher density was pushed toward 8th Street instead of closer to where the public transit is. You know, and the, the corner that this project is on is served by the 2, the 3, the 4, the 6, campus and express buses. Like, it's one of the best public transit places that we have, so that I, I hope that you encourage adequate density to be located there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, my name is Chris Coy. I live at 419 Fifth Street Southeast in the Marcy Homes neighborhood. The city spent the last couple of years laying out a plan, development plan for the city stretching 20 years into the future. There was pushback against the 2040 plan, and I would say, having attended many of Heather Worthington's neighborhood talking sessions about it, that the majority of the population was opposed to many of the principal elements of the plan. But that debate is over, and the plan is now, the debate is, and the plan is now, has been passed by the city and is the municipal policy that governs development throughout the city moving forward. One of the selling points of the 2040 plan, and this was promoted as a benefit by both Heather Worthington and my city council member, Steve Fletcher, was that it would eliminate the arbitrary and I would include capricious use of variances by developers to get greater heights and profits while offering little to the community at large. Never again would we have a developer say, "A lattice," asking for and receiving the approval to build a 42-story tower on a lot within the St. Anthony Falls Stark District, zoned for four stories. The 2040 plan has only just been adopted, and already a developer wants something they are entitled to. If you don't deny this proposal, you will be sending a message to developers that 2040 plan need not be taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else wishing to testify? Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Hello, my name is Lynn. My last name is Nyman. I'm the owner of the property, one second.
Thank you for fixing our mic.
At the Loring Bar and Restaurant, formerly Loring Pasta Bar. I've been employed there by, I was employed there by the previous owner, so I've been there a long time. I wanted to begin by thanking Ryan and CA Ventures. They've engaged more than any other developer in our neighborhood. I was very involved with the processes that led up to the Marshall and to the venue. I know people that manage these buildings, and now as a building owner, and I also run my business, I've gotten very involved with the Dinkytown Business Group. As was stated at the beginning by Ryan- The votes, however, are, the way they're cast, I want to share with you, it was 57% in favor and 33% opposed, and the remaining percentage was either, was abstaining. We just finished that yesterday, and a lot of time was put into it, including from Ryan, from Marcy Holmes, we've all talked a lot, and I've attended a lot of Marcy Holmes meetings. I was very involved with the Small Area Plan, and I sat on a committee for that. And then, my point in speaking is that I have decided, after much thinking, that I am not in favor of the development. So I am speaking out, not as the DBA member that I am, and I am also on the Special Service District's Board, and I am also on the Dinkytown Board. I am in the minority. I chose to speak up because I care very much for the area, and I care very much for the aesthetics of it. I also read, it caused me to read a lot about the 2040 plan, which I did this last week. And I, I have decided, after much, much, much consideration, that I prefer to stick with the 2040 plan. I feel that the benefits that are being offered to us do not justify the increase in height. I have concerns about the height, the parking, and of course, some of the other issues that have been mentioned that I won't go into again and again. One of my biggest concerns would be the aesthetics, considering the property that I own, you probably understand, but we also know it's a bit of a gateway into Dinkytown. And I do believe in density. I would vote for a six-story building. So I, I do thank the developers, I think they've put a lot into it, and I do feel strongly that I must stick to the, to the plan, which is six stories. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Bill Hunsicker. I live at 415 8th Street Southeast in Marcy Holmes neighborhood. I wrote a book on Dinkytown, and I think the thing that Dinkytown has going for it is the street life and a sense of community and the small scale. I think this development on 15th Avenue is more like a wall than an openness. Now, I admit that asphalt parking lot isn't the best use of land, but we should do something more than just a plaza next to McDonald's in order to engage the community more. The bus stop on 4th Street, as they have designed it, add steps. I don't know why we need steps off of 4th Street into the building. And I think there are some other issues. Why does the bicycle lane have to do an elbow coming up 15th Avenue? I'm told that that's the busiest bicycle intersection in the state, one of the busiest at least, and it should be friendly to bicycles, and there should be continuity up 15th Avenue. And I'm not sure that's all worked out yet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, President Rockwell and Commissioners. My name is Ted Tucker, 319 Fifth Street Southeast. This evening you heard about, not shifting standards, but the old standards from the Plan for Sustainable Growth and the 2040. But, as you know, the Dinkytown area has been designated as a pedestrian overlay district for a long time. Those standards apply this month and next month. And I urge you to think about if this project is sufficiently pedestrian-friendly. There were four issues covered in the staff report. Curb cuts, fewer is better, that's been mentioned, but the one that was added was one on 4th Street, which I think is particularly dangerous. I'm glad to see it modified to being just one-way in, if I understand that correctly. It'd be better to be eliminated and have that traffic come off of 5th, I think. 4th is going to be very busy with the E-line and a bikeway and, and that very heavy pedestrian traffic on 4th. So think about that. Loading areas are just inadequate, and again, trucks will be stopping in bike lanes and bus lanes to unload. This is not up to, up to standards. Fast food, not too much has been talked about that. Eliminating the drive-through is a big plus for a pedestrian overlay district, and thank you to the commission, was it about a year ago, when you turned down the expansion, which may have led to this current proposal. But reestablishing it, fast food in this project would not meet the pedestrian overlay standards as already established. And finally, the 15th Avenue facade, I'm sure you've looked at that, and it's, hovers over the sidewalk there without sufficient setbacks at whatever height. So those are the concerns I hope you will consider. Perhaps this project should be continued until many of these issues can be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Last call. All right, come on forward, state your name and address for the record.
President Rockwell, Commissioners, my name is Barbara Camm. I live at 423 7th Street Southeast. The corner of 15th and Avenue and 4th Street is a gateway to that small, unique area that is Dinkytown. It has been a mixed-use area, a commercial area, for many years, and it's appropriate for new development at this point, for the various reasons that have been brought up. The staff report states that the 10 stories proposed by the developer fits in with the six-story buildings in the area. I'd like you to walk up with me from Mariucci Arena, in your minds, to that corner. From Mariucci Arena, walking west, you see the tennis, the tennis building, about five stories. The Keeler Building, which used to be an Episcopal Center, that's six stories. The Sydney, and that's six stories. The ramp, about five stories, maybe six. And then you walk up to the bridge, to the very top of the bridge, and there are those small one- and two-story, maybe some three-story buildings that make that area so special. The 10-story building on the corner is not going to work in that area. It does create a wall. It does create a barrier. It is, it doesn't create a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. And looking over to the, to the brutalist structure, that is the chateau, that's way over. And actually, that isn't really, we're so used to it now, it doesn't seem like very much of an eyesore, even though at the time, everybody said, "Never again." But the, but this, there are many other options for that area, and we really believe that you should keep to the 2040 plan that's going to be approved. Now, one of the benefits that's been mentioned by the developer is a plaza. And actually, that plaza, along with the bridge, is part of the historic district, so that really isn't a benefit doing anything with that plaza. I would appreciate if you'd really consider what people have said with regard to thinking about other options for that site and not approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Going once, going twice. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we have a number of applications before us. Anybody wish to start us off with discussion or a motion? Commissioner Cronzer.
I have a question for staff. The raised cycle track along 15th, how much in detail does Public Works and the county work through that detail? My main question or concern is that the, that cycle track does not come back to the roadway lanes once it hits 4th Street, which separates the traveling bicyclists from the traveling vehicles by a pretty wide margin. And I'm just wondering, is there a lot more detail to work through on this, or is that kind of where Public Works wants it?
Yeah, we've had multiple meetings with Public Works and Metro Transit about the project. There's a lot of transportation questions that are still hanging around out here. There's a protected bikeway proposed for 4th Street that's going to be probably in place by the time the, the project would be constructed. The E-line is probably going to come, is going to come through shortly after in 2023. So we are still working closely with Public Works and Metro Transit on a lot of those things, but the, my understanding is that the, the proposed bikeway, which I know there have been some concerns stated about that, but generally, kind of the floating bus stop is intended to reduce traffic conflicts between bus traffic and, and bike traffic. My understanding is that the, the bike lane will be lined up to flow from the existing bike infrastructure, which is an on-street protected bikeway, up onto the sidewalk, and then back into that infrastructure seamlessly. So some of that is accommodated by extending that bus, that's more like a floating bus stop there, where the actual bus stop is pushed out into what would probably now be the buffer for the bike lane. And by kind of manipulating the public right-of-way in that way, the hope is to have enough space for pedestrians, bikes, and transit to operate all with the fewest number of conflicts. But yes, they will be continuing to work with Public Works and Transportation Planning and Programming that I know is, you know, still learning about these types of floating bus stops in other projects around the city.
Commissioners, other questions, discussion, or motions? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start things off with a motion. I'd like to start with items A, B, C, and D, the two rezonings, the conditional use permit for height, and the alteration of a non-conforming use. I'll move approval of those four items.
With a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Suesi.
Thank you, President Rockwell. I'll be voting against the motion, not so much the rezoning, but the conditional use permit in particular. I think, you know, it's, this is a tough spot because we have these two comp plans, and the zoning is next year, but the comp plan is this year. But this, this project doesn't comply with either comp plan, either the Plan for Sustainable Growth or the one that we have now, or the one that's going to be in place in just a few weeks. And as I look at the amenities that are offered in support of the conditional use permit to increase the height significantly, they look to me like the amenities that many developers are just providing with regular apartment buildings. You know, a bike lane, landscaping, things like this. A lot of developers are just offering that and not using them as selling points for something that is this big of a deviation from the space, or what's allowed by the zoning now. I'm disappointed that we've had a couple, at least two times we've seen this, a committee of the whole, and here, and that we haven't heard from anybody in long-range planning about what the guidance should be for this. I think we have an opportunity and an obligation at this point in time to look forward to the 2040 plan and the effort that was put into the land use and built form maps, which could not be more clear about what should happen at this site, which, as I have said many times, it's not, this is not a secret intersection in Minneapolis that nobody could see this coming or plan for. But if we approve this, from here on out, this will be the project that everybody compares it to. And the Dinkytown project got the conditional use permit before the comp plan. Whoever said the ink isn't even dry on it is exactly right, and this will be the one that we keep hearing about over and over and over again. And we'll be back to doing what we have been doing, which I think is approving project after project after project because some people think it's a good idea. And the best thing about the 2040 comp plan and the land use and built form map is that it gives guidance that we haven't had before, and really speaks to what we want in particular parts of the city, right down to the particular corners that we're talking about. I mean, the long-range planners felt that that was important when they developed this massive comp plan. And I think, you know, there's a reason this is coming in right under the wire, and I understand it, and I get it. I don't have a problem with a six-story plan here. I don't think this building offers anything other than, you know, apartments in an area where there's a lot of apartments. This could be done much better, but I just can't get behind this, and I'll jump ahead to the parking variance thing before we get to it. And just say also that it's another example of the university overlay parking variance without sufficient legal justification. It's usually pointed out that the practical difficulty is that something in the university overlay is in the university overlay, which is not a unique circumstance, because everything that's in the university overlay is in the university overlay. This time, what's being offered is the justification is that the practical difficulty is that the public transit is good in the area, which is not a difficulty or an impediment to a developer complying with the ordinance. It's kind of a bonus or a benefit, which is great, but it shouldn't be used as a legal justification for a variance that requires practical difficulties unique to a, to a piece of property. So I may speak again about more other specific things, but that's what I have for now, and I won't be supporting the motion.
Very good. Anybody else wishing? Commissioner Brown.
And I'll, I'll just speak to my motion briefly, and I agree with Commissioner Suesi. On the rezonings, I, I think that's pretty straightforward, that in an activity center like this, that's adjacent to a growth center, a major employer, C3A zoning, the activity center district is, is appropriate. As for the conditional use permit, I, I do think the arguments are outlined well in the staff report. I, I don't think a 10-story building at this location will endanger public health and safety. It's a location in the city that has, has a lot of activity and intensity already, is, is well-served by traffic. There is, the project provides parking, the enhanced bike, bike facilities, enhanced transit facilities are certain, certainly significant benefits. So I, I think when it comes to criteria number four, minimizing traffic congestion, addressing congestion, I, I think this project does that.
Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you. Just want to agree with many of the points raised by Commissioner Suesi. I will be supporting Commissioner Brown's motion on this, but I have issues with some of the other ones. I agree with kind of staff's assessment of them. Did want to offer some guidance on, you know, when we talk about what, what is needed to go above and beyond 2040 for myself, and, you know, I'll just speak for myself, and I know, but I know a lot of these concerns are echoed through other council members. We're really looking at an increase in affordability, we're looking at an increase in kind of transit and mobility, and we're also looking for an increase in climate resiliency. You know, on affordability, hats off to the developer for offering affordability when you didn't have to. But that said, I think we're, we're looking for more than just, you know, 8% at, 6, 8% units for 6% AMI. More would be going more, more units, or making them more affordable, or some combination of there, thereof. Transportation, I thought Commissioner Suesi did a good, good assessment. It's, you already have great transit there, so I think it would be hard to think of improvements, but of course, city would be very much open to that. And on the environment, I, I think it's, it, especially wanted to talk about this development. Like, we've heard it talked about a couple times, of, well, we're going to be creating more density in an area that it's for. And I, I want to make a distinction of, being in a climate emergency, we're asking for more than that. So having an area that is, having development's going to take up the entire block, you know, what is your stormwater management? What is your soil? What is, like, you can really much take every single part of the development, and there, there's a part that there is room for improvement and to be more environmentally conscious. And so that's, that's what we're looking for, and when we're going more. 2040 has made it development more possible throughout the entire city. So when you're going to have such a big increase, we want to make sure that we are getting to city goals.
Is there anybody else wishing? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
I want to say that there's a lot of moving parts here, and part of that is caused by the fact of the timing of this and the choice of the timing to bring this forward right now. And while I am sympathetic with the efforts that the developer has made to reaching out to the community and some of the offerings and changes that have been made in response to that, I just want to say that I feel like the Planning Commission is being put in a very difficult situation, having this come before us right now, and I don't think that needs to be happening. I think it's kind of strange that we are going to be voting on something that has a foot in two worlds when waiting a month would clear that up, and you're not doing any development now. So I just want to express my frustration at the timing of this. So I just want to express my frustration at the timing of this.
Duly noted. Anybody else? All right. We have a motion and a second for applications A through D with stated conditions. Please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Yeah.
Kogil?
I am going to vote for it.
No.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Coleman?
I said aye.
Okay.
I said no.
Okay. Ellison?
No.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
It's five to three.
That motion carries. We have a number further stated. Yes, Commissioner Brown.
And I will take item E by itself, the variance to the maximum floor area ratio. I am going to move approval of item E, the variance for floor area ratio.
Do we have a second? Sir, any second for approval to item E, increase in floor area ratio?
Second.
There is a second, a motion and a second. Commissioner Brown, could you speak to the findings, please?
I will speak to that, and I am, my motion does contradict staff recommendation, so I'll outline some of my reasoning for that. I think, again, as I mentioned in my previous statement, this site is in an activity center, it's adjacent to a growth center, an employment center. The Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth calls for up to 800 units per acre in a location like this. This project has a density of 227 units per acre. So I think this is an instance where the zoning code itself provides somewhat of a hardship. It would be very difficult to get anywhere near that level of density that's called for in the comprehensive plan without some sort of variance to FAR. I think, in addition to that, having a building that is taller than six stories at this location, which is a very prominent location, it's served well by transit, will create for a more sustainable environment in the long term. Having a concrete and steel building, I think, is more durable, more sustainable, and I think by granting this variance, it will result in a better project.
Very good. Commissioner Coleman.
I will just repeat that I think staff got it right in struggling with this application. I think they got it right on this one. I will be voting against the motion, and I don't see the zoning code provision being a hardship created by the site characteristics.
Good. Commissioner Kronzer.
Yeah, I agree. I won't be supporting this motion. I think the building has improved greatly since it first came to us, but I do think, as mentioned today at the hearing, that there are still some room for improvement and some ability to bring that mask down that won't dramatically change the project, but I don't think, as it stands right now, I can support it.
Are there any other comments? Discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval of item E, the variance to increase the floor area ratio. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Coleman?
No.
Kogil?
No.
Ellison?
No.
Kronzer?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
No.
Sweets?
No.
So that's six noes and two yeses.
That motion fails. Would anybody like to make the opposite motion? Or another motion, a different motion? Commissioner Coleman.
Yes, I will move to deny the variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio as recommended by staff.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item E? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
No.
Coleman?
Yes.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
Five yeses, three noes.
That motion carries. We have four more applications. Anybody like to make a motion? Couple of variances, three variances, and site plan review. Commissioner Brown.
I'll keep going. I'll take item F by itself, the variance to reduce the minimum parking requirement, and I'll move approval of that variance.
We have a motion to approve item F. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
Seven to one.
That motion carries. We have three more applications before us. Commissioner Brown?
And taking variance G, I will move denial of the variance to reduce the minimum loading requirement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny reduction of the minimum loading requirement. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Eight to one.
That motion carries. Next, item H. Commissioner Brown, thank you.
And I'll move approval of item H, the variance to the pedestrian-oriented overlay standards.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
Seven to one.
That motion carries. And last, we have site plan review. Commissioner Brown?
And in item I, I'll move denial of the site plan review.
We have a motion to deny site plan review. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Brown.
And I'll just add, I obviously supported the FAR variance, so I think, I would believe that approval of this site plan would be appropriate, but given that the commission voted to deny that variance, I believe that is a pretty, the density provided here is a pretty critical component of that site plan, so I will move denial.
Very good. Any further discussion? I will just, I would like to echo Commissioner Schrader's comments on how we think about kind of going above the baseline in 2040. The 2040 Plan does not establish absolute limits in the zones, so this is not a zone where the absolute limit is six stories. There is clear language in the plan that allows for greater height. I think that there are major priorities of the city, which include affordability, which is here, and sustainability, which are two core components which you can read through the majority of the policies in the 2040 Plan. And I think that to ask for some increase in density, one could check off one of those boxes, but to ask for substantial increase in density, seeing substantial movement on those priorities as articulated in the goals of the plan is critical. And I guess I will also echo Commissioner Coleman in that this is a little bit of funny time, not just this week, but also this time when we have this plan and we have a code that is not yet up to plan, up to conformance with that plan, and we've talked as a commission, and I know that the council has talked about the need to bring some more definition to what we mean by that furthering the goals of the comprehensive plan, and how that increases can translate to allowed increases in height and density. But I do know that the plan is clear on its primary priorities, again, kind of equity and affordability and climate, and that as a baseline, seeing some real movement on those is important. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
Seven to one.
That motion carries. And that concludes our business with item number eight. We'll move on to item number nine, the zoning code text amendment, and Andrew is staff.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. The item before you is a zoning code text amendment, amending regulations for off-premise signs and billboards. The proposed amendment would expand the boundary of the downtown entertainment billboard district around the U.S. Bank Stadium. The proposed amendment limits expansions and digital conversions to existing off-premise signs and billboards. The amendment also proposes to remove language regulating the city financing of billboard advertising. The elimination of this provision would streamline the ordinance and remove unnecessary As we discussed at COW in November, when the U.S. Bank Stadium was under construction, it was not subject to zoning code regulations. This brought up a possible equity issue based on signage constructed. Based on those COW discussions, staff has updated the proposed amendment to require sign credits for any expansion or digital conversion. Other than that, there are no new updates regarding this amendment. And with that, staff recommends approval of the zoning code text amendment for chapter 544, off-premise advertising signs and billboards. I'll be here for questions.
Very good. Are there any questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Kronzer.
I just, I want to be clear about something. In the edits to the amendment, there are changes going from Sixth to Seventh Street and adding Ninth Avenue South north of Sixth Street. So to me, that's an expansion of this district. Am I reading that incorrectly?
It is absolutely an expansion to this district.
Okay.
The existing district is just the boundary of the U.S. Bank Stadium. The proposed district does add that block as noted.
Any other questions of staff? Very good. Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commission. My name is Matthew Wyland. I'm with Clear Town Outdoor. Our offices are located at 3225 Spring Street in Northeast. Certainly here to speak in support of the ordinance amendment. Just want to add some brief context and history to go along with that. Specifically, what we're requesting is the conversion of two existing signs in that corner, two digital signs at exactly the same size and height. When this project failed to move forward, when the ordinance failed to move forward last time, we went back to Councilman Osami, whose ward this is, and asked him what we needed to do to reintroduce this. He requested that we meet with the neighborhoods and get their support, as well as the other council members in the area. So that's exactly what we did. We did meet with the DMNA, who represents the area around the stadium, and with the Elliott Park neighborhood where these signs are located. And what we specifically got support from them to do was to digitally, was to convert these signs to digital that face the stadium at the same size and height, and that's all we're requesting to do. We do believe this is the right location for digital signage. It's an updated look. This is an entertainment area. We believe our signs add vibrancy and energy to entertainment areas, as they've done in downtown Minneapolis around Target Center, where we have digital billboards, as well as the Hennepin Theater District. The other thing our digital billboards allow us to do is expand our commitment, community service, and the communities we're in. Every community we're in, we provide cities time and reports, we have charge. I just want to show a few examples of what we're currently doing in the city. They do a good job with the messaging that we provide them. These are some recent, is that working? These are some recent heads that we're running for the city. Silver and Seize, unfortunately, stuff on their wage, licensing, recycling, and so We've also just recently entered into a timely partnership with Hennepin County to address homelessness in the wintertime, which is going to start tomorrow, unfortunately, because of the harsh conditions. We've partnered with them that when conditions reach certain temperatures, we provide information that direct homeless to the resources they need to get off the streets because it is dangerous to be outside. These are just some copies of creative that we're running for them. We also partner with nonprofits in the community where we're in and provide them messaging on our signs. For instance, this summer, we partnered with Elliott Park to sponsor Art Pop, which is a, was a neighborhood block party they had in the area. Also downtown this summer, we sponsored and advertised for Doors Open, which invited the public downtown to visit buildings. And we've also sponsored Open Streets in the past to get the word out about the street We partner with Hennepin County Sheriff on any messaging they want. We're currently running messaging on be safe on the ice, of course, stuff with back-to-school and so forth. We do a lot with law enforcement, whatever they ask, but where we're really helpful is on Amber Alert and Futures Most Wanted, and especially anything emergency management related, such as location across the stadium is an important location for that. Finally, the other thing we've done recently is we partnered with Hennepin County on emergency weather warnings, another way to get that important messaging out. A lot of people in their cars now aren't listening to their radios, so this is another way to get the information out. So, of course, the more locations we have, the more effective this stuff can be, but we do feel it's the right location. We're certainly thankful for the other locations we have in the city, and thank you for your consideration of this proposal.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Manthe. I live at 103rd Avenue South. I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee. Just want to clarify a few things and ask a few questions for starters. The DMNA wrote a letter on the ninth, or excuse me, the 13th of June in 2008. This issue has been around for a couple of years now, trying to find a solution. We understand that. There's a lot of history behind this thing, land swaps and some other things that has brought this to this stage at this point. But the position at the DMNA, the board took the stand that they support the digital billboards within the existing size and location. However, there's a real reluctance on the part of the DMNA board to... However, there's a real reluctance on the part of the DMNA board to go beyond the scope of the current boundary. We're afraid of boundary creep over time because there's billboards on the other side of the stadium. So, when do the asks stop on this? How do we hold the line and protect the surrounding areas? We don't disagree at all with the value as defined by the applicant with messaging and other things. Also, I'd like to just clarify on page two of the staff report, the staff has written the downtown entertainment billboard district will likely lead to the conversion of the existing off-street premises signs in this area to be larger, I repeat, larger, digital signs, and this could negatively impact adjacent housing. Although staff does not anticipate significant adverse effects if the district is expanded, the applicant just said to you that they are willing to keep the signs in the same location and at the same size. So, I would like clarification on that matter. If the commission needs to condition this particular approval on those signs becoming or remaining the same size, that would be much appreciated. To turn this over carte blanche to any previous, and again, as you know, the sign ordinances are extremely long and very complicated, and we don't have the capacity as a neighborhood association to decipher these things, let alone anybody else in this city on some days. So, we'd just like clarification of that. Again, we understand the situation. We just don't want to see bigger billboards in that area. Thirdly, we don't understand how these sign credits are being used. In general, we understand if there's an existing billboard somewhere in a non-conforming residential area and that sign gets removed, then those credits can be used to convert these existing regular billboards to digital billboards. But we don't understand, is that a one-for-one swap, or do they get two-for-one? If they take down a billboard, do they get to convert two to digital? We have no understanding of how this credit system is working, and we just appreciate some clarification or explanation of that so we can understand what we're dealing with in the future. These signs, ironically, are in the Elliott Park neighborhood. They're in a council member's ward that is across the street from our neighborhood and a different council member's ward. But ironically, these signs face north, facing our neighborhood and our ward. They have very little impact on the digitization of these on Elliott Park and that area. So, again, the greatest impact is felt by our neighborhood. We have new apartments, 17 stories. There's one that's scheduled to go up at the Fleet Farm Garage in the near future. So, we just need to understand what we're dealing with here as we go into the future. Just a lot of unknowns associated with this. And then, so at a minimum, the simple ask is, you know, we'd love to have a representative from the sign company or city staff, CPED, to come to a future meeting of the DMNA and explain how this is going to work so we don't get caught blindsided again and confused in the context of the interpretation and the implementation of this complex sign ordinance. And second of all, again, the simple ask is that you condition this approval on these signs not getting any bigger. The existing signs remain the same, and the applicant stood before you a few minutes ago stating that they would keep them in the same location and of the same size. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask staff to maybe clarify both that question of size of the signs and maybe explain the mechanism by which the sign credits work.
Sure. So, when we have off-premise advertising billboard signs in non-conforming locations, the removal of two of those signs would allow you to convert one existing sign in the district to digital. More, it would require four signs to be removed to create a new billboard. However, this text amendment aims at only existing signage. So, we'd be looking at two off-premise signs that are non-conforming to be removed to make one of the signs digital.
Understood. Could you speak to the size, the size of the current signs and the permitted size of their luminescent counterparts?
In this district, the expansion would allow for larger signs here. If there were signs in this district and somebody did not want to increase the size, they wouldn't need to, but based on this language, they would absolutely have the ability to do so.
Very good. Thank you. All right, commissioners, we have...
Sorry. Can I ask staff another question? So, if we're talking very specifically about what looks like, to me, three billboards, there's two on top of the Eric the Red building. One faces south, one faces north, approximately, and there's a freestanding pedestal sign in the parking lot that faces generally towards the stadium. Are these the three signs we're talking about?
Only two. They're only applicable if they're north-facing. So, yes, those two. The north...
So, in this, the way this is read or written, two of the static signs go away and one digital sign is installed. Is that how these sign credits work?
I believe the two stacked over Eric the Red are not digital.
Correct.
So, the southern-facing sign would not be eligible to be converted.
Okay.
It's not north-facing. It would allow for that north-facing billboard to be converted. I believe the other freestanding sign over the parking lot is digital already.
No, I don't think so.
It is not already. This amendment would allow that sign to be converted to digital as well.
Okay. So, clarify something. Then, what you just said doesn't make any sense to how I thought the sign credits work.
Commissioner Crowder, I think it's, signs removed anywhere within the city limits. It doesn't have to be removed onsite, I believe.
Chairman Rock, if I may, Commissioner Crowder, this scheme has been around for 20 years, the removal of non-conforming signs. I mean, we want to go back to, it goes back into the 90s. Non-conforming signs are getting them out of south Minneapolis. We go back to the days when we had Joe Camel above grocery stores. They're, it, the signs are in areas that are not either zoned for billboards at all. Half the time, they weren't even commercially zoned. So, the signs are removed throughout the city. The benefit is to the city. You can argue about where they, you know, where you should be allowed to upgrade signs or not, but that decision was made back in the 90s. That's how we got signs up on Highway 94 going up the freeways. That's how we've been expansion of billboards downtown. So, non-conforming signs, typically a company will have what they call the plant, the number of signs they have in a city. A number of them have been identified as non-conforming. I think that Nagley is the predecessor to Clear Channel, but probably 200 faces or more have been removed over the years. So, they will find signs that currently don't meet the zoning map to loud signs throughout the city, and over time, they remove them. The square footage in this case is two to one. So, for every two square feet you remove, you can convert one to digital. The sign's in place. The code is written to say existing signs. These are existing signs with north faces. So, I hope that brings clarity to it. I appreciate the comments from the neighborhood, but I don't think the sign credit is as complicated as people are making it. If you have a non-conforming sign, if you had a sign over on, let's say, 403 Nupton, not deliver, move it, but that would be an example, or 54th and Lyndale, they could remove those and get credits. So, it really just, it's not as complicated as I think we're making it.
Can I ask, may I ask a follow-up question then? So, there's a large parking lot here. Could a sign owner remove two signs in south Minneapolis and add another freestanding sign in this proposed new district?
Well, there's spacing requirements. I mean, that was why the sign was relocated closer to this one to begin with. Their spacing requirements still apply. So, they couldn't read to the same area on the same lot. They'd be on the same zoning lot. So, the answer is probably no.
Different question. If we're really just talking about these two signs on this one property, is there a different process to convert these to digital?
So, one of the things that we looked at, because I think there's also confusion about that, one of the things staff looked at when we revisited this, was there a way to do it through a variance or CUP? But to address the concerns of the neighborhood, that's how you get into other parts of downtown. Unless you have specificity to the district, you actually do open it up because how would you ever deny a CUP or a variance for somebody else? So, the reason, the reason that the district has this leg on it is we have an existing set of signs into this condition, and the way that you make this targeted and limited is to not do it by the other means. Because how would you ever say somebody else couldn't apply for that? So, when we looked at that, we came back to a narrow expansion of the district in the closest proximity to the U.S. Bank Stadium, and we've talked about the history about that they weren't under the same regulatory regime when they were, when those signs that were developed and placed out. So, we thought this was the least intrusive way to achieve the policy and that the author sought.
Commissioner Olson.
So, is the reason that it's just the one block expansion is because that's the only block that has existing signs?
I think that's correct, actually, around the stadium as exists. There is some down towards, closer to Washington, read in different areas, but not of this kind of, not erected and with the view shed that these do.
And just to clarify Commissioner Crowder's question, in terms of adding additional signs, the spacing requirement is that there's one per zoning lot? Is that the...
Yes.
Yep, great. Commissioners, any further questions for staff? Thank you both. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
I would like to make a motion to not approve the amendments to section 544.90. Second. And to approve the amendments to 544.120. Second.
So, we have an amendment to not recommend amendments to section 544.90, but to recommend the suggested amendment to 544.120. And we have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I'd just like to explain that I don't see this as a one-block expansion. I see this as a one-lot expansion, and I have a lot of concerns about that. I'm not persuaded by the equity argument, which seems to be really the only argument for this amendment, or for the 544.90 amendment. And equity with U.S. Bank Stadium just doesn't make any sense to me. U.S. Bank Stadium is a unique place. It has a lot of things going on there that don't go on anywhere else. So, I can't support the expansion.
Commissioner Sweets.
Thank you. I agree with everything Commissioner Coleman has said, and I'd add a couple of things. I think in that surface parking lot now, on that block, there is a residential building, or if there isn't, one is supposed to go there. But, and I think the names of these things should mean something. Downtown Entertainment Billboard District is the name of this, and on that block, there's one restaurant. So, that's the entertainment. Around it, across the street, is HCMC. Kitty Corner is the medical examiner's office, and then to the east is that energy facility. So, it's not as though this is an area in which entertainment options in the near future are going to grow or increase. I suppose if those enormous public use structures disappear, you know, we'd be talking about something, but any argument you make that this is anything like the area over by Target Field or Target Center or whatever is just false. I mean, the, if there's entertainment, it's in a different part of that area of downtown for which I'm not at all recommending an expansion of this district at all. But it, she, Commissioner Coleman's exactly right. It's a one-site thing, and if that's not spot zoning, I don't know what is.
Any further discussion? Yes. Kimberly.
Sorry. I would just like to note the conversation that we just had, whether or not that's intended to be used as findings, as this is contrary to staff recommendation.
Do we need findings as a recommendation? Just of whether we approve changes to the zoning code?
We can tie it back to something which we can do with this.
Sure. Yes, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I was just going to add, if we wanted to tie it to the comprehensive plan, in the staff report, the policies that are cited generally relate to entertainment, and I would agree with Commissioner Sweets that, you know, in this particular part of downtown, we're seeing a lot of residential growth. We're seeing institutional growth while there is a stadium across the street that was a state-initiated project that really was exempt from the zoning code. And things like the signage associated with that did not come before this commission. The city had very little discretion over that. And I just believe that digital billboards on poles are something that is very highway-oriented and not well-suited for a residential area. Our comprehensive plan calls for significant growth in this area, redevelopment, additional housing, and it's really not conducive to freestanding or compatible with freestanding billboards.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. We have a motion and a second to recommend no amendments to section 544.90 and to recommend the amendments to 544.120. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Colgill?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries, and that concludes our agenda items for today's meeting. Kimberly, are there any staff updates?
One update on the 42nd and Hyawatha Starbucks project that went to the zoning and planning committee last week. The zoning and planning committee did grant the appeal with some additional conditions of approval related to the adoption and implementation of a travel demand management plan that would address further potential conflicts with pedestrians and queuing at the site.
That's a good question. How does a travel demand management plan address a Starbucks that doesn't have many employees?
So, the travel demand management plan basically allows for public works to engage with the developer to apply some conditions of approval or agreements based on traffic counts, drive-through counts, how the intersection is performing related to backup, backups at the light, et cetera, and then give us a little bit more teeth through that and through the business license to enforce things like potential onsite traffic control.
Broader than I think it is.
Very good. With that, meeting is adjourned. I was on consent. We organized the meeting at the, the agenda at the very beginning of the hearing, and if people are not here to...
I wonder if they heard Coleman's [inaudible].
Well, I, when I went through the agenda and asked people to raise their hands and let us know if you're here to testify on the agenda item, we didn't see anybody for that, for that item. I apologize for that.
Well, I think it was Marcy Homes, so I threw a [inaudible].
Well, we didn't get to Marcy Homes until we, until we had organized that agenda for 35 or so.